I will call to order the Monday 23rd meeting of the Verona Common Council and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call, please. Ms. Clark, if you would.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
Alderperson McGilvery has another conflict, but he will try to be here later.
Thank you. Next we have approval, excuse me, first we have public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Going to third and final time, anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. Now we have approval of minutes from the May 9th, the special meeting of May 20th, and also of May 21st. Those committee or council minutes are included with your packet. We can take them as a package, or we can separate them, whatever your wish is. Are there any motions at this point? Are there any motions? Do we want to approve minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for, what, May 9th, 20th, and 21st.
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and the minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business, I have a couple things this evening, but we have our newest city employee, our least senior employer, will be the city employee shortly with us this evening. I wanted to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to meet Theron Jacobson. So, Theron is going to say a few words this evening. If you would, Theron, come to the podium. Make sure the green light is lit up, please, and welcome.
Can everyone hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the City of Verona for this opportunity, and I look forward to getting to know all of you and working through complicated projects, fun projects, and everything else that's going to come into this position. I'm looking forward to learning everything I can from Mr. Reader over the next month, when I start on 31st, next Tuesday, and my goal is going to be to continue, keep the city growing, working with staff, and provide the best services to the citizens and the businesses within the city. So, once again, I thank you, and I look forward to this.
Thank you, Theron, and I just wanted to mention, mainly for the people watching at home and the public, that it was our intent all along that there would be a transition period between the new Public Works Director, Theron in this case, and with Ron Reader. So, we have about a month of transition time. I know Theron is going to be like a sponge. He's going to learn as much as he can from Ron, but only the good habits.[228.12][228.12](Laughter). So, we are very excited to have you here. We had a very strong group of candidates. The nice thing is when we can get unanimous support, which we did at the committee level, and from the council, that says a lot about the candidates. So, congratulations, we're very happy you're here, and I'm going to give you a round of applause, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone.[255.81][255.81](Applause). Thank you.
Just a couple other things, I wanted to mention that on Friday, there was a ribbon cutting for the Godherd School. The owners were there, we talked for quite some time. Things are progressing very well, they're very excited that they've opened up and business is doing well. The Verona residents, I think as most of you know, if not all of you know, so they're just very pleased to be open and have that official ribbon cutting. The final thing that I had this evening is certainly we know that there's been a lot of activity. Many of you have been involved in some of the extra meetings that we've had recently, but in the absence of a city administrator, there's been a lot of other activities that have taken place where I have done some of the work, but I just, I really wanted to thank the city council for where we are today and the progress that we're making, and also thank the city staff. The department heads have just really stepped up to the plate, and I couldn't do the additional work that I need to do if it weren't for those department heads. So, we say it all the time, we have, we have just the best departments around there, they're number one, you know, they're, whatever we ask of them, they do it. So, I wanted to make sure that publicly I stated my appreciation to the council and the staff, so thank you very much for that. Next, we have the engineer's report. Mr. Monpass, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody got my report electronically last week, but I will say that on top of that list, the Locust Bridge is open, traffic and pedestrians, so there will be no more detour. There's still some cleanup work out there to do, but it is passable for traffic and foot. So, that is the highlight. The downtown streets reconstruction bids came in on Wednesday last week. There is a recommendation or, from Public Works for that contract, the bids came in about 19% lower than my estimate, so that was a good thing. We had five bids, so it was, it was a good spread, and I think that we'll get a good product out of this. If there's any other questions, I can answer those.
Are there any questions for, or comments for Mr. Monpass? I'll just make a comment. I was not in the area when the bridge opened. I was overnight in northern Wisconsin, and I was following the comments on the Scenic Ridge Facebook page, and there were a lot of people in that community, or that part, and also Cathedral Point, because the people that live in Scenic Ridge weren't driving through Cathedral Point anymore, unless they didn't know that the bridge was open. So, it looks very nice, and people are very happy. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Not seeing any, so we will move to committee reports. We have the finance committee first. Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you. For Agenda Item 8A1, I would like to make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Linder. Ms. Doyle, please.
For explanation of some of the larger expenditures for this period, we had $80,528 to ACOM Technical Services, of that approximately $50,000 was billable, $9,800 for the Locust Bridge, $6,100 for Community Parking Lot, and $6,220,000 for PB Right-Away. We also had a large item for the community park and park lane parking lots, that was $123,976.76 to Hammersley Stone Company, and then culminating with $429,659.30 to Xenitec, and that was for the Locust Bridge widening.
Thank you. Questions or comments for city staff or for the finance committee? Questions or comments? I'm not seeing any, so all those in favor of approval of the payment of bills in a total amount of $868,522.21 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries, the bills have been approved. Ms. Doyle, please.
For Agenda Item 8A2, I would like to make a recommendation to approve Resolution Number R-16-018, providing for the sale of approximately $9,890,000 in general obligation promissory note, Series 2016A.
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Linder. Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you. Let's see here, we do have Mike Herring of Ellers and Associates here, which he did give an explanation to the finance committee and is here at the council meeting to present a pre-sale report for the city's 2016 proposed general obligation borrowing. The proposed borrowing is in the amount of $9,890,000, and the proposed borrowing includes funds for the following projects. For new projects issued, that would be for the community park parking lot, remodel of the former VACT building, quarry purchase for Public Works and Open Space, street improvements for Mill and Overlay Project, pedestrian bike trail study and construction, County Highway M and County Highway PD intersection, traffic signals for Peole and Wayland and Lanos, Bridge Old PB/Badger Mill, also for church in South Schuman Street and Park Lane, as well as downtown streetscaping and parking improvements, which are a part of TIF Number 4, collection system repairs, sewer cleaning machine, a tool cat and snow equipment, as well as a materials screener for a subtotal of $8,647,200, and then this also includes refinancing of 2005 bonds. And then, as I said, we do have Mr. Harrington here, or Herring here, if we would like, Harrigan, if we would like further explanation, sorry about that.[640.66][640.66](Laughter).
Mr. Harrigan, if you would please, you want to walk through the numbers a little bit? As always, it's nice to see you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Madam Chair, and council members, it's good to be back to Verona. I did want to just highlight some of the items that were in this pre-sale report for you. The pre-sale report sets forth the fact that this would be a general obligation note issue, which means that it's going to have a maturity of 10 years, and this issue would be done through a competitive sale, as you've done all of your debt in the past, which means that you're going to go out and solicit proposals from all of the banks and underwriters, really, across the country, give them right to bid against each other competitively to see who can bring in the lowest total interest rate and cost. That would occur at your regular meeting on the 27th of June, be back with the results of that, should you approve the resolutions before you this evening. One thing to note is that this issue is deliberately kept under the $10 million level, and that's an important threshold, because if you're issuing more than $10 million in a calendar year as a municipality, your debt would be non-bank qualified, which means you'd be in a higher interest rate bracket, so it's in your interest to try to maintain that level. As was mentioned in, contained in the pre-sale report, I guess I'd like to maybe direct you to page six of that document that's before you. That gives you a little more of a breakdown on the items that are sort of catalogued according to levy-supported items, these are the things that will be paid for through the property tax levy, and then those add up to a total of $5,767,000, and they include some space needs items, some roadway improvements, and then some equipment items. We have Tax Increment District Number 4, which is your downtown tax increment district, and that district is healthy enough that it's anticipated that this debt, this portion of the debt will be fully paid for with proceeds coming from increments from Tax Increment District Number 4. We also have a bid for water utility and sewer utility, those utilities are expected to pay their costs, and then finally, there is a, an amount of about $1,085,000 out of this total that would be needed for the refinancing of an existing 2005 debt issue for savings. The only reason we're doing that is, again, to achieve some benefit because of the lower interest rate environment that we have today. Again, we have the cost distributed as to the cost of issuance and allocated to each of those areas. When you put it all together, it adds up to the $9,890,000 total. I would like to point out on page seven that this is, gives us an idea of the overall game plan in terms of the tax rate impact. On the left side, we have your equalized valuation projection, and you'll note that in '17, that's a key increase there that's projected, going from $1,630,000 to over $2 billion in value, and of course, that's due to the unique circumstance of the closure of your Tax Increment District Number 7. That has some very important benefits that I'm sure that you've had some discussion about, not the least of which is that with this additional debt coming online, you're still going to be in a position to experience a lower tax rate impact versus where you are today. Right now, you're at $2.14,000 a thousand for debt payments. With the addition of this particular borrowing, that would go down still to $1.83, and then to $1.90, and then drop thereafter. On page seven, you can see that the issue that's in the middle of the page is, adds up to the $9,890,000. On the following page, we have it kind of broken out into those segment areas, and you'll notice that we do have a little shorter amortization on the TID 4 debt, because that district is expected to close in year 2023, so we want to make sure that we're paying for all of the costs associated with that district within its remaining life. The others are spread over the 10-year period, relatively level payments, and then the current refunding is on the far right side. If we take a look at the following page, that refunding is broken down and shows you the savings that's coming into play there. We're trading interest rates right now on that '05 issue that range from 3.6 to 3.85 for interest rates that we expect would be in about 0.95 to 1.15 range. That'll, that'll yield about a $25,000 savings over the three years net of costs of the issue.
I'm sorry to interrupt, are, you're on page?
I'm on page nine, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, no. I counted.
Did I say eight?
No, you just said next page, and I was apparently already behind.
Yeah. Now, page nine, again, the left side is the existing, the box on the left is the existing payments, the box in the middle is the proposed, and then the difference is the, is the savings on the far right.
So, that's the savings over four years?
Yes, four years from today, three years of actual payments, and we're not stretching it out, it's, it's being paid off on the same timeline as what your debt is currently scheduled to be paid for. There's one other thing that we also wanted to call to your attention, and it doesn't really impact your decision for tonight, but in comprehensively thinking about your, your debt going forward, as we've always done, we have presented this in the context of an overall longer-term capital financing plan, so that you can see where you would be in relationship to capital financing for years 17 through 20. And we do have an opportunity with an existing debt issue that's outstanding in 2008 after the 1st of the year. That issue could be prepaid, and what's been recommended here through consultation with the staff and with the mayor is applying some of the cash that you're going to be receiving from the TID closure to effectively de-fees a good portion of that debt. What this is showing is in the, just, columns just to the right of center, you'll see a tax rate here for your overall debt, including the projected future issues into 2020. You'd see that that would go up to about $2.51 in year 2021 if you execute all the plans through the year 2020. But by applying the cash and defeating that portion of that debt, as indicated in the purple columns, in 2021, that number would drop from 2.51 down to 2.38, and all the prior years up through, from 19 and beyond, you, you would have lower tax rates. The difference in savings is pointed out on the far right side, and the tax rate savings is indicated as being about 13, 14 cents a year. As was mentioned by the mayor and the finance committee, you've got, the total benefit is really, by defeating that, you're saving the total of the 330, excuse me, $3,330,000 there, because not only do you use the cash to pay off the principal, but you're not then going to be paying interest on that principal amount any longer, and so that differential is the $3.3 million in benefit. So, we think that that's a wise plan, and it's a, it's an approach that we'd be revisiting after the 1st of the year. But for tonight, the action before you is the consideration of that resolution, and the resolution, it's calling for the sale of the bonds, it actually triggers us and authorizes us to prepare your preliminary official statement, which is like the offering prospectus for the bonds, and allows us to solicit the bids to bring back to you for consideration at your meeting in June. So, with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions about anything that I've covered here, but effectively, by adopting the resolution, you're approving the game plan that's laid out there.
That is correct, and you did a good job, Mike, of explaining that, so I just want to make sure the council understood that this is, this issue would be back on the, on the second meeting in June, that's where we would actually take official action on awarding the bids, we'd have the roll call vote, and so forth.
Correct.
Okay. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Mr. Touche.
Sorry, just doing some quick math here. So, oh, shoot, I did it wrong. So, if we, so I just went, going on page 10, you talk about in the purple area, so we, if we pay down in 2018 the $2,795,000, am I reading this right? So, that, then we would actually end up saving, I mean, I understand we'd save future payments, which is part of that $300,000, but there's the interest, and that's what I'm just trying to, quickly, I didn't have.
The difference between the $3,330,000 and the $2,795 is, is the interest savings benefit.
So, that's about $530,000, $535,000?
Yep.
So, by paying in hands, we're saving half a million dollars.
That's right. And, and you're also reducing the tax rate impact.
Yeah, because we're not making those payments.
You're not making the payments.
All right, I just want to make sure I understood it completely.
Yep.
So, saving five, a half a million dollars by paying down two and a half, two and three-quarters of a million dollars?
Yep.
By prepaying, and we have the ability to do that without any penalty?
Yeah, that's a good point, so.
Any prepayment penalty?
The prepayment penalty stuff is interesting, what other debt vehicles do we have that don't have prepayment penalty?
When you, whenever you issue, in fact, the notes that you're, you're calling for to be issued tonight have a call protection for the bondholders, and that's, that's another form of, it's the inverse of, of prepayment benefit. If you take a look at page seven of the, of the packet, in the middle is, is the payment structure for the proposed note issue, you'll see that we've put a little red box around the final three maturities there. You would not be able to prepay until you got to year 2024 on this, and the reason why that's set up this way is that the investors want to have the protection of being able to have an investment that will bring them the yield that they're anticipating through a defined timeframe. You do have the ability to, you could, you could have set this up so that you would have prepayment authority within a year, but then you'd be paying significantly higher interest rate for that. Each year that you go out, up to about that seventh year, you're going to be paying a little more interest, so we think there isn't going to be a penalty, and the industry is fairly comfortable with a prepayment authority after year seven on a 10-year bond issue.
Okay.
If you're going longer on a 20-year bond issue, then that pushes out at least to either eight or even 10 years in, in call protection, but the issue that we're talking about has, you've, by, by next year, you will have reached the prepayment point on those bonds, and it gives us the ability to use the cash to, to defeat that.
Okay. No, I, I thank you, so, just to reiterate, and I like to do it, just to make sure I understand it, so because of when we borrowed, we're limited to the, we're in the front half of that seven-year window, and we really don't want to pay those out, put simply, correct?
That, and, well, yes, that, that's correct, as far as the cash part of it is concerned, yep. The refi, if we were using debt to refinance it instead of using cash to refinance it for savings?
Mm-hmm.
We would still recommend that you wait on that until after the first year because of that $10 million bond bank qualification, a limitation that I mentioned early in the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just think, one other comment on this, and it's more towards future borrowing that we do, and I'm going to give an example of when we borrowed for the library. A decision was made that we were going to borrow $1 million of it from the state trust fund, so with the state trust fund, there is never a prepayment penalty. So, that's, when we did that loan, it was referred to as the Louis loan, because Louis Eifert was the one that initially was, was proposing that with conversations with Cindy and Mike at the time, but, so as we move forward, and if it makes sense for us to use trust fund loan rather than bonding, we should keep that in mind, because it provides us that flexibility.
And we typically do run the, and did in this case, run parallel analysis with the trust fund, just to check on it. The interest rates are, are higher on the trust fund today than they would be in the open market, but you have to weigh that against the other benefits that come into play, and so that, that's what we do.
Thank you. Further questions for Mr. Harrigan? Or for the committee? Seeing no other questions, the motion before you is approval of Resolution Number R-16-018, providing for the sale of approximately $9,890,000 of general obligation promissory note, Series 2016A. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you. Good luck.
Sounds good. Ms. Doyle, anything else from finance committee?
No further business from the finance committee this evening.
All right, thank you. Parks and Recreation and Forestry Commission? Ms. Ricky, please.
I'd like to make a recommendation for approval of professional services agreement with MSA to prepare master plan for Fireman's Park.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Steiner. Ms. Ricky, please.
The Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission recommends approval of a professional services agreement with MSA to prepare a master plan for Fireman's Park. The purpose of the plan is to look at existing park facilities and site conditions and recommend what improvements could be made to better serve the wide variety of people who utilize the park. MSA has proposed to complete the project on a time and materials basis at a cost not to exceed $9,500.
Thank you. We have heard the explanation on the professional services agreement with MSA. Questions or comments?
Is there anyone from the parks other than the committee? I'm just curious if this was ever done before.
No. This, I thought Mr. Reader was coming to the podium, surprised me a little bit. Brad or Heather, you want to respond to that?
I don't expect you guys to know, I'm just curious.
Ron probably actually does know more than us.
He's been here long enough.
Do you want to talk about it?
I was just curious if, that, if the Fireman's Park had ever had a master plan for done in the past.
I, certainly, I'm not aware of the fact, no.
Okay, that's all.
There's been some schematics, but that's about it.
Back-of-the-napkin plans? Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve a professional services agreement with MSA to prepare master plan for Fireman's Park. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. I would just add that I think part of the intent there with that services agreement is that we can have some, it may help us in our budget decisions as we're moving forward. I think that's part of the reason that we're looking at doing that right now. Ms. Ricky, anything else from parks?
Nothing further.
All right, thank you. We'll move on then to Public Works Sewer and Water. Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 8C1, I will make a motion to recommend approval of Resolution R-16-019, release of platted utility easement.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
Pure Sweet Honey in the industrial plat number two has requested the release of the platted utility easement for public utilities on lots 15 and 16 to accommodate the proposed expansion. Pure Sweet Honey has obtained releases from TDS, Alliant Energy, and Madison Gas and Electric. City of Verona utilities are all located in this, in the street right-of-way, and the existing utility easement on lots 15 and 16 serves no benefit to our utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. You've heard the background. Questions, comments? Mr. Reader is in the audience as well. Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve Resolution Number R-16-019 for the release of platted utility easement in the industrial plat number two for lots 15 and 16. All those in favor signify by saying aye. in the industrial plat number two for lots fifteen and sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Uh, thank you. Under item eight, C-two, I make an emotion to approve, for the approval of contract for the downtown streets reconstruction phase one project.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
Uh, the city received five sealed bids for this project. The low bid was submitted by J.I. Construction LLC of Livingston, Wisconsin in the amount of one million, two hundred, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred, fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. The high bid was submitted by Ian N. Hughes Company Incorporated of Monroe, Wisconsin in the amount of one million, five hundred, seventy-two thousand, eight hundred, eight dollars and forty cents. The engineer's estimate for the project was one million, five hundred, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. AEI Comm recommends that the City of Verona accept a bid of J.I. Construction LLC for the downtown streets reconstruction phase one project, and would recommend awarding the contract the amount of one million, two hundred, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred, fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. The difference between that and the estimate is about three hundred thousand dollars less.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Questions or comments from the council? Are there questions or comments? Ms. Doyle, please.
Um, I'd just like to say that I'm glad to see this moving forward and, uh, look forward to seeing the improvements out there in our downtown. I know some residents over time have expressed some frustration with the creation of downtown plan recommendations that never seem to come to fruition, so it's great to see us as taking action as a body and, and creating some real change to attract more folks to our downtown.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Mr. Linder, please.
Is there a timeframe, and I assume they're starting in a few weeks?
Yes.
Timeframe to be done?
Uh, yeah, I think Reader has his finger on the dates more than I do, but, uh, there's going to be a lot going on down this, this summer, that's for sure.
Mr. Reader, please.
I would anticipate, uh, by the time we get our performance and payment bonds back from the contractor, I would in, anticipate starting construction in about thirty days. So we will be, uh, notifying all the residents in the area and have, holding a public informational meeting in about two to three weeks, so.
Do you know when they might be done?
Uh, we, our intent is to have Church Street completed and, for the beginning of the school session in the fall. And I just want to clarify to everyone, this project is not our main street downtown streetscape project. This is just Church Street, Grove Street, and Marietta Street. And phase two of the project next year will include South Marietta, uh, South Schuman Street, Park Lane, and a piece of railroad street, so.
Ron, do you mind describing what reconstruction, you know, actually what will happen during that process?
So, it's a total reconstruct of our infrastructure in this area for sanitary sewer and water is, uh, was originally built in the, in the early thirties. Um, it's served its useful life, and, uh, so we will be totally reconstructing the water main, sanitary sewer, the storm sewer, um, in the air, uh, the streets, curb and gutter, and in areas that existing sidewalk exists, uh, there'll be new sidewalk as well.
Mr. Diaz? Nothing else? Ron addressed it. Um, Ron mentioned about the next phase. We look forward to seeing you and hearing from you next year on that.
Yes. Life full.
Thanks, Ron. Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments? Ms. Doyle, please.
Sorry, I'll just add that my wonkiness pres- prejudices me, uh, you know, just laying the groundwork for all the implementation. I know it's been long coming, but these are necessary steps to move forward in, in subsequent, uh, phases.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the contract for downtown streets reconstru- reconstruction phase one project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Touche?
Under item eight, C-three, I will make a, a motion to recommend approval of the, of the consulting services agreement for the north neighborhood stormwater study.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
Uh, this is for a consulting services agreement for stormwater analysis for the north neighborhood closed basin. The service to be provided for the projects are as follows. Stormwater management analysis will determine existing and proposed runoff rates to kettles one and two, and proposed preliminary sizes of ponds and six infiltration basins, establish user rates for chargeback for future developments, establish force main stormwater, su- excuse me, storm sewer route. It will have a handful of meetings and a final report to be presented to the city, uh, before the school year. Total estimated fee is not to exceed forty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Again, this is for the north neighborhood. Now, if you remember during the presentation, we've got some areas that are going to collect a lot of water, and, um, we need to figure out what the property owners would, um, have to cover to deal with this, uh, stormwater.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Questions, comments? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the consulting services agreement for the north neighborhood stormwater study. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Uh, thank you. Under item eight, C-four, I'm making a motion to, to recommend approval for a consulting services agreement for change order number three for professional services for the stormwater utility.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
This amendment is for AEI Comm to provide consulting services for the stormwater utility needs for twenty sixteen. The following tasks will be formed under this agreement. Stormwater permit administration, including in this task is map updates, attend quarterly stormwater league group meetings, and assist the city with permit compliance issues. Dry weather monitoring program, including the task to field ins- is field inspections at ten different sites, and the Maple Road Pond dredging, including, is included in this survey, construction plans, and permitting with state agencies. The estimated fee is not to exceed fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the consulting services agreement change order number three for professional services for the stormwater utility. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche?
Um, I, because we have two, um, items that for, um, that we made move into closed session, I wonder if I should table this item, go through public safety, and then come back to it?
How about by unanimous consent, the council agrees that we will hold the two closed item sessions concurrently?
Do we need to vote on that?
No, not if we have consensus. So we will come back to that. Ms. Doyle?
I guess just to double check, we need, uh, separate motions since they're for different, uh...
We'll need separate motions, yeah, but we'll just do them, we'll do them together. So we'll come back to this when we go into closed session.
Perfect.
Anything else, uh, at this point then, from Public Works?
Nothing for Public Works.
Okay, we will come back to that. So we are on agenda item.
We're done with Public Works.
We're done with Public Works. So anything, Public Safety Welfare Committee, who's handling that this evening? Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item nine, or excuse me, eight, D-one, I will make a motion to accept a police chief's recommendation to deny the operator's license for Vance Mindman.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Touche, please.
Um, uh, put simply, uh, Vance did not meet, um, the city's standards for accepting an operator, or offering an operator's license, and, uh, the committee, uh, deter- agreed with the chief's recommendation for denial.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? Not seeing any, the motion before you is to approve, or excuse me, is to deny the operator's license, license for Vance Minderman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Anything else in Public Safety and Welfare Committee?
Nothing.
Thank you. We will go back then to the prior item. Uh, before we have a motion, Mr. Kleimeyer, is there, um, anything you wish to state in open session prior to motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Mayor, we could have a brief, uh, excuse me, well, sorry, thank you, Chief. We could have a brief discussion in open session. Um, the, the terms, many terms of the agreements, I believe, were as part of your packet. It's really, the purpose for going into closed session is, um, negotiating a dollar amount with Epic Systems that would be inserted to an agreement. So I think there is a valid basis to go into closed session. Um, but the, the agreement itself relates to, um, the timing of some water improvements that would be a very small part of what is a much larger project that Epic is currently undertaking, um, for Northern Lights Road. And from the city's perspective, we essentially have two options. We could not do this work now, do it in the future, which would be, I think, from, from the public standpoint, bad, because now we're going to have to rip up a road that we just completed the last year. It's going to cause significant inconvenience for the public, and obviously, anytime you have construction, you have public safety issues that you would like to try to avoid, and you avoid that by taking care of it now. Um, and so the agreement is essentially an incentive to have Epic do the work at this time, because it is going to be, there's a benefit to the city and the benefit to the taxpayers to having it be done now, but obviously, it provides somewhat of a complication for Epic as they try to incorporate this work into a much larger project. And so it's, it's essentially an incentive agreement that would identify that the work would be done. There would be a payment that would be made, um, from the city to Epic, and that's really, I think, the, the major reason for going into closed session, is to identify what the council would be comfortable with.
Thank you. With that background, do we have a motion to convene in closed session? If so, I would ask whoever the author of that motion is to read the verbiage on the agenda, please.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Touche?
Um, the common council may convene in closed session by, as authorized by section nineteen dot eighty-five, paren one, paren E of the Wisconsin statutes, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the, the investigating of public funds of conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the common council may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Uh, this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Clark, if you'd read the roll, please.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Diaz?
Aye.
Alder Doyle?
Aye.
Alder Linder?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Steiner?
Aye.
The motion to convene in roll call, uh, and, excuse me, in closed session is unanimous. Um, can we also have a motion then on the second item, please? Mr. Touche, please.
I'll make that motion. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by section nineteen dot eighty-five, paren one, paren C of the Wisconsin statutes, for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The common council may convene in open session and discuss and take action on that subject matter discussed in closed session.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Again, this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Clark, if you would, please.
Alder Diaz?
Aye.
Alder Doyle?
Aye.
Alder Linder? Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Steiner?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
And that vote is unanimous as well. Make sure we state the time we went in the closed session.
Bless you.
Bless you. We are back in open session. I would ask if there's any motions at this time, uh, following the conversations in closed session? Are there any motions? Mr. Touche, please.
I would like to make a motion, uh, to approve, um, to approve agreement where, with Epic, for two hundred and ninety thousand dollars as an incentive payment to be made by the city to Epic and subject to final approval of the city public works director and the city attorney.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky.
Um, by way of explanation, I would like to ask our city attorney to, um, help me out here.
Sure, and it, as, as we had discussed briefly in open session before we went into closed session, this is a project that relates to some water improvements. It is a much smaller part of a much larger project that Epic is working on, and quite frankly, to a certain extent, there's an inconvenience that is going to be caused to Epic here. Coupled with that, there's a great benefit, city staff believes, to the public for having this work done now as opposed to being done, let's say, a year from now, or two years from now, where the road would have to be ripped up then, creating a lot of inconvenience for the public, creating public safety issues for the public. And so when you look at the agreement and you have reference to an incentive payment, again, it's to incent, uh, Epic to be willing to do this work right now. And so that's, that's the purpose for the agreement, and the agreement, again, lays out, um, a lot of the benefits the public receives. And then one of the things that Ron and I still need to work on is specifically identifying the additional work that will need to be done. So there is some additional work, but, um, that's the purpose for having final approval by the public works director and city attorney so that we can get that taken care of and get this moving, because timing is of the essence.
Any further questions for Mr. Kleimeyer or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. We are now on agenda item number ten under new business. This is discussion and possible action regarding approving an appointment to fill a vacancy on the city council. I'll just make a couple real quick comments. Um, this time it was, it's, thank you, Mr. Kleimeyer. This time it was a, a challenge for us to try and get the committee together, uh, the three of us on the committee. Um, we had five candidates that were interested, and it's no criticism to anybody on the council or to any of the five candidates. There were some legitimate reasons, and there were conflicts, um, and legitimate conflicts that, uh, that we needed to deal with in the last over a month. So we worked really hard. Jack and I and, and Liz met last week and had a conversation and to take a look at any available times that we could possibly, uh, get these interviews conducted before Liz left for, for a bit. So we, uh, this afternoon, um, we had four of the interviews from one to three, and then we recessed, and we had the fifth interview at six fifteen or shortly thereafter this evening. I would say that we're very, very fortunate that we had five candidates that, if they were running and they would have won, any one of the five certainly could have done the job. Um, we don't have full agreement on who we think, um, the recommended candidate should be, but, uh, certainly, we were open to any questions, um, and we'll go from there. So, Jack?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Scott Stewart to the city council.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Brad?
Seconded by Mr. Steiner. Mr. Linder?
Yeah, I wish, Mr. Mayor, you said a lot of the things I was thinking. A lot of these candidates really good, and they all brought a little bit, something different to the table. The, uh, some of them, I, I'm on city council and I'm coach softball, and I'm pretty busy, and I swear, some of these made me look like I wasn't doing anything, through all the things they have accomplished. And, uh, all really good. I just was overwhelmed a little bit by, by Scott with the, I only met him today, so I based it basically only on the interview. Um, two other candidates I only met today, and, uh, but... Two other candidates I only met today. And, uh, but some of his fiscal responsibility, he was talking about the debt, um, being pro-business. There was, there was a number of items that, uh, that I thought that would fit really well with the council and so that's why I'm supporting Scott.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. Um, I guess what I kind of evaluated the five different candidates on was especially the question that we asked in regard to what the three, what are the three most important issues facing the city of Verona? And I felt that, um, and this was probably due to a little bit of their, their business background and, and focus on finance, but that Scott and Derek's, uh, three items that they identified were all basically related to finance and taxes, which are obviously important components of this job. But I think that we here on the council have been fantastic fiscal stewards. I mean, you even just look at last year's budget. We were able to meet the staffing and other capital needs of the city while decreasing the overall tax rate. And I feel like we have a very strong finance committee, very strong fiscally-minded folks here on the council, and also a very strong, um, finance director. So I just feel like an additional focus on finance. Again, although important, doesn't add any value for the city of Verona's residents. So that was kind of what led me to kind of, not necessarily disqualify, but focus more on Sarah, Marcia, or Carl because they showed a more comprehensive, kind of robust, understanding of the issues facing all of Verona. Some of the issues that came up were ensuring that we're, we're looking at creating a, or supporting middle-market housing for middle-class residents here in Verona, taking into consideration the needs of different portions of the community. And again, just not that narrow focus on fiscal needs. So based on that, I thought obviously Carl had a robust knowledge of the, the city's history and had some really interesting ideas as far as trying to brand the city, kind of creating Verona as more of a destination and creating that unique identity. I felt like we kind of got that from Marcia as well, just especially with some of her volunteerism here in the community. She spoke about growth being important, affordability and quality of life for seniors, making sure that this is a safe community for our children, families, and also a place where businesses can prosper. But I have to say that Sarah was probably my number one out of the five candidates. I really liked how she talked about, especially with our rapid growth, we have to ensure that this is still a place where middle-income folks can work, our public safety folks, our teachers. She also expressed interest, obviously, because of her professional work with the Wisconsin Bike Federation in ensuring that we're a bike and pedestrian safe community, and also talked about issues with the school district. So I just feel like, out of the five candidates, Sarah had a skill set that would complement our current skills here at the council and would really add value for the residents of this community. So that's why I guess I, I would be open to supporting Sarah, Marcia, or Carl, but just felt that there was too narrow of a focus with Scott and Derek, and I would not support either.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say I plan on voting no, and it's not anything against Scott. I think he, um, from what I've seen of his resume and from what I heard in, in the meeting, I think his, he sounds like an excellent and qualified candidate. However, I'm voting no because I think Marcia Kosheta is the best candidate. I think she has the best work in the community. She's done amazing things for the Badger Prairie Needs Network. I think she's tough. And so, 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 so she would be my first choice. And so that's, that's why I, I plan on voting no. It's not against anything. Actually, we, um, I think are really lucky as a community to have such five great people just based on resume and everything I've heard about, um, people at, um, on the committee. I gotta watch a little bit of Carl Curtis's, um, interview and I thought he was great, well-rounded, very knowledgeable, as you'd expect from somebody who used to work for the chamber. And I, I, I just think we're really lucky, but like I said, I plan on, plan on voting no.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? I'll just give my two cents worth. And I mentioned this at the committee level. I really didn't rank the individuals 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5, in my opinion. I just thought, um, Scott just, he nailed it. He had a home run. I thought he was very well-rounded. The things that I heard, I didn't think was a narrow focus. I did hear him talk about, you know, fiscal responsibility and how we're gonna handle the, the TIF dollars. He also talked about managing the, the debt burden. He talked about joint services between us and Fitchburg. He talked about a balance between multi-family and single-family. He talked about taxes and that we told people that, um, when the Epic TIF closed, that we were gonna provide property tax relief. He talked about business expansion, but yet it being the right kind of expansion that we were looking responsible, um, expansion in the city. He, he talked about being pro-business, supporting the appropriate development, especially in the downtown area. So I think he was a very, very, uh, well-rounded candidate. Has spent a considerable amount in, uh, time in the city, as some of the other candidates have as well, and has been quite active in the community. And has taken some leadership positions, um, in the activities that he's been involved in. So I would, I would strongly encourage you to support the motion and support Scott. Go ahead, Ms. Doyle.
I guess, just in addition, you know, and, and as you expressed, uh, Mr. Mayor, those are different issues, but I feel like it all kind of went back to making sure Verona was a good place for business and not necessarily a good place for residents and resident quality of life. So I guess especially embarking on the closure of the Epic TIF and having some big decisions ahead of us in this budget cycle, I just, um, I guess I'm a little worried about what that fiscal and pro-business focus does for our opportunities for investing in more resources for the community at large and our actual residents, and, um, also the implementation of this fantastic bike and pedestrian plan that we just did. I really think that that could do great things, especially to improve the quality of life for our seniors who might not want to drive as much, and also for our children in our community that, again, don't have access to driving. And it, that's where I really feel that Sarah's expertise would very much behoove the community.
I'll just, go ahead, Ms. Linder.
Oh, thank you. Um, I did want, I wanted to agree with Mrs. Doyle on, on one particular, one thing in particular is just talking to these people, they got some different ideas and stuff, stuff maybe we haven't thought about lately, haven't talked about lately, and some we haven't talked about ever, ways that may be improved the city and to think long-term. I thought that was kind of interesting, um, part of the process. And, uh, the only other thing I'll say is that, you know, these people all wanted to get involved and, you know, maybe in the future, some of these people can get involved in a different way, on committees or subcommittees or something like that, 'cause I was really appreciative that they put their hat in the ring.
Absolutely. I, I would agree with that. Now, I lost my train and thought what I was gonna say before, but... Oh, no, I know what I was gonna say is that I think as far as some of the other issues, Ms. Doyle, that you mentioned, I haven't seen anyone on the council in recent time. I think we have a lot of cohesiveness. I think a lot of the things that are priority, priorities for you are also priorities for everybody else on the council. So I don't wanna give the, anyone the impression that we're going down a road here, going down the path where we're only gonna be focused on expenses and only on property taxes and only on, you know, business development. I know I get criticized a lot of times for being too pro-business, but I'm not afraid to tell people no. And we do it with developers. And we just recently saw that happen with, uh, um, some residential property. If we need to say no, we think it's not in the best interest of the city, then that's what we're gonna do. So I, I really think that we have a lot of cohesiveness right now. And, uh, you know, we do have a vacancy. We need to fill it. And, uh, I just, I, I was very impressed with Scott. So I, I, again, I, I would encourage you to support the motion. Mac and then Liz again. Mr. McIlroy, please.
Sure. And then, and this isn't directed at any of the candidates, 'cause I didn't sit through the interviews, so I can't say one way or the other whether or not someone should be excluded from the, the pool. It's great to hear that we've got wonderful people there. What I would say is, it, being financially or fiscally responsible isn't necessarily mutually exclusive from caring about the community and building the community. Verona's gotten to where it's at because we've had great people who sit on the, the council over the years and they've done a good job of planning for, for growth and addressing these issues. And I think it's a, I, I'm all for someone who wants to be fiscally responsible. I think, as you said, we've done a good job with the finance committee. You and I may not always agree on, on certain issues, but I think in general, we've, we've kind of come to the same conclusion that we're working in a general direction. So I, I, I'm not gonna, I would just say, I, let's, I, I, it sounds a little bit like you're, we're saying that it's either you're financially responsible or you're good for the community. And I think you can be both of those things. And I think you've, we've all demonstrated that when we've, we've worked together.
Go ahead. Ms. Doyle and then Mr. Diaz.
I completely agree, and I wasn't speaking to the council. I was just speaking, um, in Derek and Scott's interviews as opposed to Sarah, Marcia, and Carl's interviews. Fiscal, um, fiscal restraint was a portion of all five, but it, my takeaway was it was the focus of Derek and Scott's where all these other issues and quality of life issues were lacking in their interviews. But I saw those in Sarah, Marcia, and Carl's, along with fiscal responsibility.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Diaz?
Excuse me. I just wanted to ask for a roll call vote, just so there's no confusion or controversy, at least from, related to that. I know, I know some people like to make up stuff.
All right. A roll call vote has been requested. Any, uh, yeah, any other comments? Ms. Ricky, please.
I just wanted to, um, address the issue of whether these candidates, I only got to sit in on one interview and it was Carl Curtis, and we are all familiar with him to begin with. So I just wondered if, um, if it's a big factor, whether or not the person would run for reelection. And, um, I, I believe you said that Marcia Kosheta said that she, um, would consider it, but not necessarily?
I'll just go real, uh, quick through this. Marcia Kosheta said that she didn't really know, but she was sort of, you know, sort of a yes. Scott was the second candidate. He said he would, he said yes, would very much like to do so. Next was Derek. Derek said, "I don't know. I would use this time to decide." Sarah was simply yes. And, um, Carl said yes, assuming it was not too much of a burden or a time commitment or conflict.
Okay.
He didn't, he didn't anticipate that it would, but he said his, his answer was yes, but that was making the assumption that we wouldn't have conflicts, that he would miss meetings and to committees that he was appointed to. He wasn't concerned about council meetings.
So I guess I'm just bringing that up because whether or not they run for reelection, the, all, all of these people would have another opportunity to be on city council
Correct.
during the election cycle.
Correct.
And, um, so I guess that's sort of swaying me, um, more to support, I guess, Marcia Kosheta because I believe that she would come in with her feet hitting the ground running and, um, um, just think that she would do a good job because I know her a little bit from previ, previous experience. So I'm, I feel bad that I didn't get to sit in on all five interviews.
Mr. Linder, please.
Since all of the committees want to comment, that, uh, question didn't really factor into me whatsoever.
Yeah.
I asked it, it was on the list, but I can fully expect somebody, if they haven't been on here, yeah, I'll just give it a try. If I don't like it, I won't do it. I fully understand. I didn't, I didn't factor that in at all in my decision.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? We do have a motion before us. A roll call vote has been requested. And the motion is, was made by Mr. Linder, seconded by Mr. Steiner, to support the appointment of Scott Stewart to the position. So Ms. Clark, if you'd read the roll, please.
Alder Person Diaz?
No.
Alder Person Doyle?
No.
Alder Person Linder?
Yes.
Alder Person McIlroy?
Yes.
Alder Person Ricky?
No.
Alder Person Steiner?
Yes.
Alder Person Touche?
Yes.
And the motion passes for three. So we will, um, we will notify all the candidates. We will, at the next council meeting, hopefully, we will have, uh, Scott Stewart here, Mr. Stewart, and we will have him sworn in. And hopefully by then, um, I can have some decisions made on the current vacancies on committees. And that's probably for the next meeting. So with that, Mr. Diaz, please.
Uh, sorry, you can rule this out of order. Um, do you, do you anticipate shuffling the committee assignments? Or do you think they're mostly gonna stay the same? And I don't know if that's appropriate to ask him, just...
It's appropriate to ask. My intent is, and I haven't, I haven't thought about it really because, I mean, I haven't thought about who ends up where because it depends on the person, I think. You know, we wanna use people's abilities and their talents. It is not my intent to do a lot of shuffling, 'cause I think that the committees are working pretty well. And as I stated in the interviews, um, it's less than a year from now we make committee appointments again. So I don't see a need in doing a lot of shuffling on committees. But I will, I will be considering that, um, like soon. So if you have thoughts, let me know. Mr. McIlroy, please.
Just a question. I'm, so, um, given that Ms. Doyle's gonna be gone for a little while, are, have you given that any consideration? I mean, for instance, personnel or, or finance, either one of those, if... And I'm not asking you to put anybody there. I'm, I don't care who, but it'd be nice if, if there was a quorum at meetings that, so...
Ms. Doyle and I have had that conversation, and I think we have something that we will be bringing forward. So we want to try and eliminate the possibility of, uh, lack of quorum as much as we possibly can. So if we do anything, um, in that regard, you know, and I'll, I'll announce that with, uh, with the committee appointments, there is the potential and legally, we can make temporary appointments to the committees with the understanding that when Ms. Doyle, uh, returns from her, from her responsibilities in DC, that she assumes the positions on the committees that she had before. So we'll talk about that at the next meeting. Okay. Any other questions on that? If not, we have approval of operator licenses. Ms. Clark, please.
I have an operator license for Christian Gliter for Vincenzo BP.
You've heard the applicant. What's your pleasure? We have a motion by Ms. Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Touche. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Any announcements this evening? Mr. Steiner, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Hometown Days is a week early this year. There's a PGA golf tournament out at University Ridge and, and so, please, change your calendars from the second weekend to the first weekend, 2, 3, 4, and 5 of June, with the big parade at noon time on the 5th of June. It's a, a very good citywide get-together, a lot of fundraising taking place, good times, but we have to do it a week early. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any other announcements? Ms. Ricky, please.
I just know that there's a community meal, I think, on Saturdays, um, with Epic food available for anyone in the community who wants to partake. And, um, I just wanted to proposition the council to, um, serve the food at one of those, um, Saturday gatherings.
Yes, I was gonna add that as well. And I've had conversations with Marcia Kosheta. They are looking for volunteers. That doesn't necessarily mean that you have to commit to every Saturday, but if you are interested in assisting them, they would greatly appreciate it. Mr. Diaz and then Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you. I, I have two announcements. Um, one, the Upper Sugar River Watershed Association is having their second annual Rob Sugar River Ramble. It's an outdoor event and fundraiser for, for a wonderful environmental organization. It's on June 5th. You can go to their Facebook page for more information. There's also, the Verona Area Historical Society is having a, uh, a cemetery history walk on Saturday at 10:00 AM on June 11th. It's also on the Facebook page if you want more information.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle, please.
I'd just like to quickly add to the comments about the community meal. And I was hoping that we could maybe put together a city team of maybe some elected officials and staff in August when I'm back from DC. And just wanted to extend a thank you to the community for their understanding. I will be, uh, in DC for the months of June and July, working with City First Enterprises. They're a nonprofit that uses financing mechanisms to encourage more local, community-based development that adds value to the community. So I'm hoping to, uh, bring those skills and lessons back here to Verona in August.
And in addition, I know, Liz, you won't, you won't mind me saying this. You welcome people to email you and contact you. It is your intent to continue having those conversations while you're gone.
And, uh, it was reported in the Verona Press, but just to add, because I will be gone for those two months, even though it is something that's intimately tied to municipal development, I will be donating my city pay for the months of June and July to some organizations here in... I will be donating my city pay for the months of June and July to some organizations here in the community.
Thank you. Any other announcements? I just have one, and that is, we will be contacting our tech individual, Mr. Mahoney, to set up an email account for Mr. Stewart. So I'm requesting that if any of you have any issues that are IT-related, I know you do, because you already told me, and I sent an email on that today. So if there's anyone else that has any technology issues that are city-related, let me know that we can have Mr. Mahoney take care of that while he's doing other work for us. Also, keep an eye on your emails for the possibility of, of additional meetings that may have to, may arise. With that, I would accept the motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Ricky. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We are adjourned.